Today is our Carter County Commission Regular Session, Monday, 9/18/2020, at 6:00 P.M. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we can, Ray.
Very much. This meeting is being conducted electronically with lots of access to the protection of health, safety, and welfare of the public due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. I would ask each of you, if you would please, to speak directly into your mic. Place in your mic so that we can hear you out here just as well. I'm yelling, that's probably true. I'm really trying to come across where you can hear. Go ahead and call the meeting to order, Madam Court, on the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Mark Levens.
Here.
Dr. Aiketh.
Present.
Present.
Here. Nancy Brown.
Here.
Mike Hill.
Present.
Patty Woodby.
Here.
Brad Johnson.
Here.
Mark Tester.
Here.
Von Cannon.
Commissioner Von Cannon.
Jesse Grantstaff.
Present.
Jerry Prophet.
Present.
Austin James.
Here.
Ross Garland.
I don't think Ross's mic's working. I see him on video, but I don't hear him.
Present.
Here.
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 Sandra Culler.
Present.
Ray Lins. Aaron Fray.
Here.
Present.
Kelly Collins.
Present.
David Miller.
Yes.
Paul Fraser.
Thank you very much. I assume that all of you got your agenda. And the lead to add, agenda item number seven. Under number seven, please put under there James Bowers. Mr. Bowers contacted me yesterday, indicated he had submitted his material to fill the vacancy in District Seven as well. So we have two applicants there, Dustin Baker and James Bowers. With those additions, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I did. Miller.
Mr. Miller made the motion, second.
Second, Mark Levens.
All in favor, aye.
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 Close, likewise. Agenda set, thank you very much. It's time. We'll take a look at the minutes. I hope you've looked right over the minutes. Do we have any additions, deletions, corrections, anything about the minutes? Any changes, anything at all about the minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Well, second.
Mr. Culler, second.
No. Nancy Brown.
Nancy Brown. Make a motion, second the motion.
Yes, I am, Nancy Brown.
You're second.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's very difficult for us to hear out here. Please try to get to the mic and speak directly into it. Thank you. All in favor, aye.
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 No, likewise. The minutes stand approved as presented. We're down to number five on our agenda. Madam Court, if you would read those names, please. Notary bond.
Tina M. Johnson, Dexter Peavers, Katherine R. Anderson, Joy K. Woods, Donna J. Behrs, Taylor Collins, Amy Robinson, Steven C. Foltz, Sherry A. Maines, Angela Michelle Irwin, John K. Bank, David A. Lacy, Lou Cooter, Scott Morton, Melissa Don Car, Brian Kipton, Patty Whitson, Kelly J. Carr, Deanna Grayville, and Rachel Ferguson.
There you go, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Tester, second.
Culler.
Thank you. Did you get that, Ms. Lewis? All in favor, aye.
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 Motion passed, thank you. Okay, now it's time to reelect our elected attorney. If you look at the agenda, electing an attorney, we have in, we have in the resume, the resume was very impressive and extensive. Done a good job for us, in my opinion. Are you a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Commissioner Hill, Run Mountain.
Second.
Aaron Fraser.
Approved.
You're second.
Yeah.
Jesse Grantstaff.
Grantstaff.
Commissioner Grantstaff, second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, likewise. unanimous. Mr. Harden, we do appreciate the work that you do for us.
Thank you.
You put up with us, even in this virtual space that we're in.
Sorry for your luck, Mr. Harden.
Okay, now we come to number seven on our agenda. We're in the direction of the constable to District Seven. Mr. Baker, are you online? Did you call in? I'll give you an opportunity to speak, sir, if you'd like to.
Yes, sir, I greatly appreciate you for, uh, foremost, of this life, to thank everyone for allowing this opportunity to be with the people for, uh, second to the constable. I was born and raised here in Elizabethan. I love my community. I've been very privileged to serve and protect people for my professional career, and I would now like to start doing that more at home. As you guys open lips off of my packet, I feel that I'm qualified for the position. My ultimate goal is to be a good steward to the community, to be a good representative, and to basically try to provide any way that I can for anyone in need. I want to start to work jointly with all the officers in our office, and I'll do the best job that I can.
Appreciate your reading, sir. And now I have Mr. James Bowers. Are you on the line, Mr. Bowers? Mr. James Bowers? Mr. Bowers, last time, Mr. Bowers. Madam Court, what we will do is, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Baker, Sandra Culler, motion to approve, Baker.
Second from Aaron Fraser.
Don't we have to nominate?
Yes, we do, I'm sorry.
I nominate Mr. Baker, Sandra Culler.
I'd like to move that nominations cease and we elect Mr. Baker by acclamation, seeing as he was the only person who attended this evening.
But, uh, let me just say, Commissioner Hill, I think he may be on the line. He may not be speaking.
Can you hear me? Everybody, hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mike.
I can hear you, Mike.
I make motion that the nominations cease and we elect Mr. Baker by acclamation at this time.
And my response to that, we have two nominations. One, I have chosen, this is a gentleman that I have spoken with since yesterday afternoon, Mr. Bowers. So, and also, Ms. Goos' office has also spoken the other day. So, he may not choose to speak, so I will not entertain that motion to cease. Are you a nomination, we already got a nomination for Mr. Baker. Do we hear a nomination for Mr. Bowers?
Sir, I do, because he turned it in last month, and why we didn't get the packets, I do not know, but if a man puts his name in the hat, we need to consider it.
Mr. Bailey, I hear.
Yes.
Put that in front of the motion, Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Do I hear a second for Mr. Baker?
I second, I second. Chair Prophet.
Harrison.
Madam Court, if you call the roll, and please indicate, when Ms. Goos calls the roll, please indicate the name of the person you're voting for. Go ahead and have the vote.
Willie Campbell.
Mr. Baker.
Mark Levens.
Mr. Baker.
Robert Aka.
Baker.
Nancy Brown.
Baker.
Mike Hill.
Baker.
Patty Woodby.
Baker.
Bradley Johnson.
Baker.
Mark Tester.
Baker.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grantstaff.
Baker.
Jerry Prophet.
Bowers.
Austin James.
Baker.
Ross Garland. Ross Garland.
Baker. Did you get that?
I did.
Okay, good.
Ms. Ward.
Baker.
Ginger Holdren.
Baker.
Randall Jenkins.
Baker.
Gary Bailey.
Bowers.
Travis Hill.
Baker.
Sandra Culler.
Baker.
Ray Lins.
Bowers.
Aaron Fraser.
Bowers.
Rob Jamie.
Bowers.
Kathy Collins.
I think that's Kelly Collins, but Baker.
Baker.
Yes, and it's Kelly Collins.
David Miller.
Baker.
Mr. Baker's got eighteen votes.
Not him.
If those eight, five in favor of Mr. Baker, he'll seek, take that seat. Next agenda item is the addition and deletion of the tax rolls. County trustee, are you on the line? Mr. Trustee, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, I do.
Do I hear a nomination to approve the additions to the tax roll?
So moved.
So moved.
Right.
There's second, Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Aye.
No, likewise. Motion approved. I'll now entertain a motion for the deletion tax roll. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Bailey.
Ground staff.
Ground staff.
Ground staff, who made the motion?
Travis Hill.
Travis Hill, that's it. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any, um, all in favor, aye.
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 No, likewise. Motion passed. Thank you. We're now to our resolution, number nine on the agenda. Still coming across okay, continue if they're good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Resolution A.
Yes, sir. Resolution A is authorizing submission of an application and acceptance of litter and trash collecting grant from State Department of Transportation for Carter County Litter Grant Program, which is the annual grant that we receive through TDOT every year for litter pickup. We just need approval to send in the application.
Do you hear a motion?
Second, Aaron Fraser.
Who made the motion?
Ross Garland.
Ross, motion passed, do I hear a second?
Sandra Culler.
Aaron Fraser, correction by Commissioner. Any discussion on the resolution?
Mr. Von Cannon was requesting someone tell him what we were voting on. He did that by text.
Resolution A. Second. Mr. Prophet, was that you?
Yes, sir. Mr. Von Cannon, I just saw a text. He was requesting or wanted to know what we were voting on.
Resolution A.
Aye, on the litter grant.
All in favor.
Aye. Did it come through?
Again, the attorney is trying. We actually have to hear Mr. Von Cannon saying yes or no. So, if you could share the speaker with him, the mic, excuse me, he will have to vote yes or no on this resolution, on his voice. Mr. Von Cannon.
That's our authority here to put some of our current county.
Is it? Mr. Von Cannon.
Mr. Chairman, he did vote yes. That was a text, he did vote yes. Jerry Prophet, he did vote yes by text.
Excuse me. End the mic, over to Mr. Von Cannon.
He doesn't get it. He has to audibly hear the voice.
Okay. All right, good enough. Motion passed on Resolution A. Did we vote?
No.
Did not vote.
All in favor of rescinding on Resolution A.
Yeah, you add backgrounds and stuff on that.
Okay, now that's what I'm down the book of pages. All in favor of voting on this Resolution A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, likewise.
What are you doing? Getting all the edges off? What is that?
Stupid, he is a stupid guy, this.
Okay, let's go ahead with Resolution D.
Can you help me jump into this? Sure. This is a resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute the grant contract with the state department of health in Carter County for fiscal year 2020, 2021. This is the annual grant for health department operations, reimbursement grant, uh, the health department basically handles all aspects of it. It's their, a major source of their funding every.
Your motion to approve, resolution.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Hill, District Two.
Second.
Second, Prophet's second.
Mr. Campbell. All in favor.
Aye.
Close, likewise. Resolution D passed, sir. We're moving down to C.
Okay, Resolution D is to request the unclaimed bounty to all county state treasures. You recall, we started doing it, I think this is the third year, uh, and this year, to my knowledge, we have ninety-nine percent of the amount of others to request, and we have to approve this resolution and turn it in, uh, before the end of the month.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Mike Hill, second vote by Commissioner. Gary Bailey, did you get that, Ms. Lewis? Any discussion on the resolution? Second, um, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
No, likewise. Resolution. Now, Resolution D.
Resolution D is to authorize the county commissioners to purchase insurance coverage under county insurance plans. Pretty self-explanatory, allows all municipal purposes, health insurance through the county, maintain it even after. And the one suggestion I would make, uh, that's come to my attention since we drafted it, maybe we'll clarify it a little bit, in item number four, after the year resolved law, uh, it says serving a full, after serving a full term, uh, I would suggest that we just say, uh, uh, after serving an appointed term, uh, to clarify that. He served.
Motion to approve is accepted, or presented. Commissioner Hill, Run Mountain.
Motion by Mike Hill, second.
I didn't second that.
I seconded it, Chairman Lyons, Aka, First District.
Thank you, sir. Get that, Ms. Lewis. Thank you very much. All in favor, aye.
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 I was making a good.
Aye.
That's the change.
I heard Commissioner Hill say with the changes.
Thank you.
If you didn't, I meant to say that.
I would say, we're through, uh, resolution. Down to item ten, consideration of 2020, 2021, for where is it? We'll talk about that as well.
I will, sir. This is, uh, the annual agreement for, if you, uh, this is, to my knowledge, as negotiated and approved by the other eight total counties. This is, uh, what is being presented in each one, sir, to my knowledge, it's in final form. The only change that I made from what they presented us was just simply that we will the ninety-day delay in the service in the old contract, so it's effective continually. But other than that, to my knowledge, this is what we provided, and these are the terms that, uh, are available for us to continue these services.
Do you hear a motion to approve the agreement?
I make a motion.
Second.
Prophet.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner, did you make a motion? Prophet, my.
Jerry.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Chairman Lyons?
Yes.
I'd like to abstain, since I'm both a College of Medicine and an ETSU employee.
Okay, it's not break up, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Did you get that, Ms. Lewis? Thank you. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
This may be a good opportunity for us to take a recess for about five, ten minutes. I'll go with ten minutes. Please recess. Can you see who's on the line, uh, I think? Can you see who's up there now? It's on.
It's been over ten minutes now.
I think we need to go ahead and call the meeting back to order, come out of recess. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
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 I want, I want to make sure, we moved the table up just a little bit. I wanted to make sure that, that everyone understands the first part of the meeting, what you were voting on.
Yes.
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 Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
If anyone didn't, will you please let me know by speaking there? Anyone did not understand? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Aka, is the sound better now?
Yes, thank you, Attorney Harden, that's much better.
Yes, sir.
Everyone else, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll try to be a little bit louder, they got me a little closer now to the mic. One thing that I'd ask you to do, I think too, would be helpful for the rest of the meeting, is when you start to make a motion, will you please give me your name? Like, Mike Hill, I make a motion. Like, Mike Hill, I make a motion, like you did once, Mike, which was very good.
Okay.
Second the motion, that way Ms. Lewis can get the names down. If you could do that much for me, I, I would appreciate it very much. Mayor Barnett, are you online, sir? It's time for you to report, Mayor. You go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make it brief. Uh, I guess, I guess as you guys know, uh, the courthouse opened back up today. Uh, I think it went firely smooth, except for, I think Ms. Gooch was pretty well swamped, but, uh, besides that, I think, uh, everything else was pretty good. Uh, I, I really want to thank everybody for the hard work during this, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, problem here, so I want to thank everybody for working hard, and it's, I know it's hard to work from, you know, uh, from home, but, uh, we're still at nineteen, nineteen positive, so I think we're pretty good shape right now, so, uh, hopefully, hopefully we can level out. A couple things, uh, paving at the workforce development, I guess Mr. James would probably talk about that, but I, they're paving, started today, in the parking lot, uh, workforce development. We've got lots put up to jail last week, which, uh, looks really good. Uh, Gap Creek Park, if you get a chance to go down through there and see what work we've got completed on it, uh, it's really coming together, we've got the bridge coming about mid-June. Uh, EMA Office been working really hard with TMA and FEMA. We're still trying to get our money, we're trying to get money, and, uh, we haven't succeeded yet, but we're still working at that, they're working hard on the paperwork on that. And that's about all I've got. Anybody got any questions for me?
I've got one, Mayor.
Yes.
The active cases, the last report I saw was four. Is that, is that still a good number? Out of the nineteen, there are only four.
Correct. Yes, four, four active, uh, and that should be planned out any, any, any day now, they should be, should be to zero, because we've been nineteen for several days now, so hopefully those, those four will be, uh, be okay in a few more, in a couple of days, maybe, maybe, maybe the next couple of days. Yes, sir.
Good news.
Great news, yes. Any more questions?
Mayor, we appreciate the hard work that you've been doing during this, uh, very difficult time. I know you're working on projects, uh, almost daily. I think you even poured the concrete, didn't you, up at the Sluner property?
I, I made that statement, I sure did, I helped go pour the concrete, because I thought, I saw a couple heads kind of shaking like they didn't believe it did, but I sure was up there helping. So if they're uneven, it's probably my fault, but we had some good people setting it, setting it up, so it's, uh, it's level right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're down to, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Down to committee reports. First committee is Budget Committee, Chairman Garland. You have the floor, sir. Chairman Garland. Committee.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Uh, got a long list, there's about twenty-five on here, but I was going to ask the mayor, um, about the uh, report on the COVID, are those numbers included from, from the Saturday that they had the, uh, the testing at, at Hampton? Yes, uh, as what, well, I understand there was four. That was, the final four was there, uh, uh, that's the last I've, I've heard, uh, so out of two hundred and ninety-five, I would, I happened to be up there that day, and it was two hundred and ninety-five came through, and, uh, I thought four was, uh, zero would have been a better number, but
Yeah.
four were the, the asymptomatic, whatever, how to say that, but, uh, uh, they didn't know they had it, so anyway, it's still bad, but, uh, that's the last four I know of. Okay, good, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, bye. Okay, um, alright, I'm here, I've got, well, we got twenty-five of them, this will cover, uh, April as well, where we weren't able to have the meeting, but we still had our budget meeting. Uh, and if you can, the, in your packets, it's got all the, the amendments, if you want to follow along. But I will say, we have been working really hard, we've got a great, uh, bunch of guys and girls that if we spent a lot of hours on this, this new budget, working it out. Brad's been great, the committee's been great, and everybody's been working hard, the departments and offices and people really working with us to, to make this budget work out for the new year and this, uh, uh, kind of tough time we're having, so, but things are looking pretty good, we haven't ironed it out completely, but it's in pretty good shape, and, uh, just wanted to mention that before I moved on. So that is good, but, uh, what I'll do, we've got April, uh, right now, and I'll just start off, and I'll, I'll start with the motion, and then we can get the second, and I'll, I'll go slow, so Patty gets the record and, and, um, just follow along. Okay, so the first one, I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number One to the Health Services Agreement for Inmate Healthcare. This is an increase of twenty thousand eight eighty-four sixty-two for twenty twenty-one.
You're second on the motion.
I'll second it. Mark Testor.
Mark Testor, second. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Aye.
Robert Aka.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Nancy Brown.
Commissioner Brown.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Aye.
Mark Edmond.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Von Cannon.
They didn't show up there on the screen.
Mr. Brownstaff.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Jerry Prophet.
Commissioner Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdren.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey. Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sandra Coler. Commissioner Coler.
Commissioner Coler.
Rayline. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Coler?
Yes.
voted yes.
That's correct.
Reveal the vote.
Twenty-three aye.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three ayes, motion passed, Chairman Garland.
Alright, great. Uh, next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve amended contract with the Tennessee Department of Corrections for Housing State Inmates. Uh, this is an additional two years on the contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
You're second.
Travis Hill.
Second.
Travis Hill, second on the motion. Any discussion?
Chairman Lyons, Brad Johnson.
Go ahead.
Chairman Ross, did it increase in the amount of contracts for inmates? Or is it the same as last year?
Oh, that's a good question there, Brad. Um, you may ask, is, ask Mr. Burke right there, maybe he can answer that a little bit better.
No change in the daily rate.
No change in the rate, okay. Question answered, thank you.
Other questions?
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Aye.
Robert Aka.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Aye.
Mark Edmond. Mark Testor.
Commissioner Testor.
Aye.
Robert Edmond.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Sandra Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sandra Coler.
Aye.
Rayline. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Von Cannon. Mr. Von Cannon. Reveal the vote.
Aye.
Twenty-three ayes, motion passed, Chairman.
Wonderful.
I am.
Next one. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve General Fund One-O-One, Budget Amendment Number Nine. Total of three hundred seventy-eight thousand, four ninety-eight, eighty-one cents. Uh, sixty-eight thousand, seven sixty-seven, fifty-three, coming from unassigned fund balance. Uh, those are to cover additional metal, medical insurance premiums, contributions to the HSAs, corner communications, uh, increasing county share of ag extension salaries and benefits, and additional pauper burials.
You're second on the motion.
Not good. Commissioner Hill, Run Mountain.
Thanks, sir. Discussion? Questions, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Let, let me say this, Chairman Lyons, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Uh, normally, I, I don't include all of that information on that, but I want to include that tonight, just, just so that you do know exactly what, what may be coming out of unassigned fund balance.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that clarification.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Aye.
Robert Aka.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Aye.
Mark Testor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Aye.
Sandra Coler.
Aye.
Rayline. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Motion passed, Chairman Garland.
Thank you, uh, next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve Solid Waste and Sanitation Fund One-Sixteen, Amendment Eight. A total of a hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, twenty-eight cents. One hundred and seventeen, nine twenty-five, and nineteen cents, coming from fund balance, uh, for landfill costs and additional disposal fees.
Second by Sandra Coler.
Second by Sandra Coler, in discussion. Questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Aye.
Robert Aka.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Aye.
Mark Testor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sandra Coler.
Aye.
Rayline. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins. Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Motion passed, Chairman Garland.
Alright, uh, next, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve Sports and Recreation Fund One-Twenty-three, Amendment Number Five. Uh, and this is a total of twenty-five thousand dollars, nothing from fund balance, and this is to appropriate for, uh, the dog park at the Gap Creek Park.
Mike Hill, Run Mountain, District Two.
Mr. Hill, Mike Hill, second. Any discussion?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Say that I'm, I'm really happy to see this going through without the, uh, need for, uh, resolution that was requested ask for, uh, cooperation from the city. Uh, I didn't think it was necessary then, and, and I'm glad to see that, that things are moving forward on Gap Creek with the, uh, the dog park grant.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
No.
Robert Aka.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Aye.
Mark Testor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
No.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sandra Coler.
Aye.
Rayline. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Motion passed, Chairman Garland.
Alright. Uh, the next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve Highway and Public Works Fund One-Thirty-One, Amendment Nine. Total of eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, eighty-three cents, nothing from unassigned fund balance.
Commissioner James, you second that?
Yes.
Okay, discussion? Question? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Aye.
Robert Aka.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Aye.
Mark Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland. Ross Garland.
Aye.
Mr. Grantham?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren.
Aye.
Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Motion passed, sir.
All right. The next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve General Purpose School Fund 141, Amendment Nine. A total of four hundred sixty-two thousand, four twenty-one, and eighty-seven cents. All right.
Second, Commissioner James. Any discussion, questions?
Chairman, just to let everybody know, item number seven, in May, there's a reversing entry for that. Yeah, tha- that's right, that was, they took ninety-two hundred dollars out of, which one that is exactly? Number seven is the principal bonuses, Ross. Yes. I'm, I'm four sixty-two. We've got seventy-five, four fifty-six, ninety, coming from fund balance, and that's for COVID-19 equipment and principal bonuses, but in number eleven, well, the one coming up, we're taking it out of there. The, or amendment, I mean, I guess, item eleven, let's see. That doesn't sound right.
He'll, he'll be in May. Mr. Burke, second.
Oh, and, okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Madam Burke call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteins. Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland. Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren. Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill.
Aye.
Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller. Twenty-three ayes.
Motion passed, sir.
All right. Next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve School Federal Projects Fund 142, Amendment Number Five. A total of a hundred and eighteen thousand, six sixty-three, and thirteen cents, nothing from fund balance.
Take it at Mark Levens.
Commissioner Levens, second. Any discussion? Questions? Madam Burke call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon. Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland. Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren. Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier. Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Motion carried, Chairman.
All right, next item, a motion to approve Central Cafeteria Fund 143, Amendment Number Six. A total of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, seventy-five cents. One hundred seventeen, nine twenty-five, and fifty-four, coming from their fund balance for a wage increase previously approved in retiree medical insurance premiums.
Second, Gary Bailey.
Gary Bailey, second. Any discussion or question? Madam Burke call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteins. Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland. Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren. Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Motion passed, Chairman.
All right, and the last one for April is, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve Head Start Fund 145, Amendment Number Three. Total of ninety-five thousand, six oh three, and eighty-five cents. Twenty-eight, eight eighty-nine, sixty-six, coming from Head Start Fund Balance.
You're second.
Commissioner James.
Commissioner James, second, any questions? Discussion? Madam Burke call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteins. Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Motion carried, Chairman.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to May. Got another, should have another packet there for that. And... Let's see, one second. Okay, yes. This will be, this is for our last May meeting. Put this in the form of a motion to declare items from the Sheriff's Department as surplus, and that list is included in the May packet, it's a few pages back, but you can find those items, but we need to accept those as surplus from the Sheriff's Department.
Mike Hill, District Two.
Motion second. Any questions?
Ross, are they selling them on Gov. deals?
Yeah, I thi- I think that's, that was my understanding from what Brad said with Gov. deals, mostly, yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Madam Burke call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteins. Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Aye.
Ross Garland. Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren.
Aye.
Yes.
Travis Hill. Sandra Culler.
Aye.
Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Motion passed, Chairman.
All right, good. Next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve the amendment decrease of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine forty-seven, ninety-nine, to the contract of obligation in lieu of performance barn, bond for the sanitary landfill. Isaiah Grinsteins, I'll make that second.
Who made the second?
Isaiah.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, questions?
That, I'll just say, that's the contract we have, just to basically close down the, past landfill we have, there's about, I think, ten years left on that contract.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Willie Campbell. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteins.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Ginger Hogren. Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve General Fund 101, Amendment Number Ten. A total of a hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, twenty-five cents, and only one fifty-seven, seventy-six, from unassigned fund balance, this for a property tax refund.
Second, Mike Hill.
Ray Linn, second, Mike Hill. Any discussion or questions?
Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteins. Jerry Prophet. James. Ross Garland. Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren. Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn.
Aye.
Robin McCamey. David Miller.
Motion passed, Chairman.
All right, next item, a form of a motion to approve General Fund 101, this is Amendment Ten A, a total of three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-six cents, nothing from fund balance.
Commissioner James, second.
Any discussion or questions? Madam Clerk?
Willie Campbell.
What do you need? Ms. Lewis? Is the recorder not working? Sure. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteins. Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland. Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren. Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Motion passed, Chairman.
All right, good. Next item, put in the form of a motion to approve General Fund 101, a bit, Amendment Ten B, a total of fifteen hundred and three dollars, forty-four cents, nothing from fund balance.
Second, Travis Hill.
You're second, Travis Hill. Discussion?
Yeah, let me say this, Chairman, this is basically money to, to pay Abby for basically all the overtime and the work she's been doing to pretty much put these meetings on, this, this Zoom stuff, and she's worked really hard for us and put in a bunch of hours, after hours, to make this stuff happen, so that's what this money's for, and it's, it's well, well spent, money well spent.
Ending ovation from District Two.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levens. Robert Aka. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill. Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson. Mark Caster. Charles Von Cannon, Isaiah Grinsteins. Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland. Layla Ward. Ginger Hogren. Randall Jenkins. Gary Bailey. Travis Hill. Sandra Culler. Ray Linn. Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey. Kelly Collins. David Miller.
Motion passed, Chairman, could you please hold for a second, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is that good? Go ahead, Chairman. Go ahead, Chairman.
Okay, and I can't forget on Amanda Scow, she's been helping us out, and Gary Bailey's done great. A lot of people spent time to make this stuff happen, and Isaiah, Aaron, those IT guys, a lot of people have really made this happen, so they deserve the credit. Okay, I'll move on. Next item, motion to approve Solid Waste and Sanitation Fund One-Sixteen, Amendment Number Nine, a total of ten thousand dollars, nothing from fund balance.
Second, for Sonia Culler.
Any discussion, questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levins.
Aye.
Robert Encke.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Castor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdrin.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion passed, sir.
All right, one second. Let me turn the page here. Okay, next item is putting the form of a motion to approve Sports and Recreation Fund One-Twenty-three, Amendment Number Six, total of twenty-five thousand dollars for, from fund balance for the Gap Creek Park Project.
Second, Mike Hill.
Michael, second. Any discussion? Questions? Stand there, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
No.
Robert Encke.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Castor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdrin.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
No.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
All right.
Motion passed, Chairman.
All right, good. We're getting there, just a few more. Next one, motion to approve Highway Public Works Fund One-Thirty-One, Amendment Ten, a total of three thousand dollars, nothing from fund balance.
Second, Jerry Prophet.
Second, Commissioner Prophet. Any discussion, questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Aye.
Robert Encke.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Castor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdrin.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion passed, sir.
All right, next item, motion to approve General Purpose School Fund One-Forty-One, Amendment Ten, a total of sixty-three thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars thirty cents, nothing from fund balance.
Second, Layla Ward.
Layla Ward, second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins. Robert Encke.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Castor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
I can't hear it.
Now!
That sounds like Shirley.
Thank you.
That was a yes.
Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdrin.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yeah.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Sonia. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Passed, Chairman.
All right, motion carries there. Next item, motion to approve General Purpose School Fund One-Forty-One, Amendment Eleven, a total of eighty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars twenty-one cents, and there is a net of thirty-four thousand seven sixty-two-ten going back into the General Purpose School Fund budget on this.
Second, approve, Mark Levins.
Second, Commissioner Levins, all. Any discussion?
Yeah, let me say this, Chairman. Travis spoke up in, about the, the principle of evaluation bonuses. This is money that, that was not going to be given out, but put back in, and that was a total of forty-eight thousand five forty-four.
That's correct, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Yes.
Roy, Robert Encke.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
You can call me Roy, Mary.
All right.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Castor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye, aye, aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdrin.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next one, a motion to approve the monetary donations made to the animal shelter, two thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Your motion.
Second, Aaron Frazier.
Second, aye. Right. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Yes.
Robert Encke.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Aye.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Castor.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Isaiah Grunstein.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdrin.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Aye.
Kelly Collins.
Aye.
David Miller.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
All right, next one, a motion to approve, or to appropriate thirty-two thousand fifty dollars from the courthouse and jail maintenance reserve to replace the boiler in the courthouse.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, Isaiah Grunstaff.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Ross, can you repeat that again, what that was for?
Well, to appropriate thirty-two thousand fifty dollars from the courthouse and jail maintenance reserve to replace the boiler in the courthouse.
We haven't bid the boiler out yet.
Well, that's, I was kind, I was reading over that one, and I was trying to look through minutes to see if we, had we, did we vote on that? I can't actually remember, Brad.
I think what that's supposed to have been, it's got messed up, maybe when we was doing it over Zoom, it was supposed to have been three thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars to hire mechanical architects to evaluate the current boiler system to give us recommendations on what to replace it with.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're right on that, but it, will that still be money from that same account, Brad?
Yes.
Okay, so that total, I'll say it again, and Patsy, if you want to scratch that out.
Ready. She's ready, Chairman.
So that'll be three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, is that right, Austin?
Yeah, I believe that's what it is, Ross.
Okay, yeah. And that money will come from the courthouse and jail maintenance reserve, not to replace, but just, just to get the architect fees on that, right?
That's correct. They're just going to evaluate our current boiler system and give us recommendations as to how we can become more energy efficient or change ductwork around to be able to help optimize the best out of the new unit.
All right, thanks for that clarification, Austin.
Motion second. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Mark Levins.
Yes.
Encke.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Ah.
Brad Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Testor.
Ah.
Cannon.
Hi.
Hi.
That's a third Marine.
Hi.
Jerry Prophet.
Hi.
Austin James.
Hi.
Ross Garland.
Hi.
Taylor Ward.
Hi.
Ginger Holdren.
Hi.
Randall Jenkins.
Hi.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Hi.
Sandra Color.
Hi.
Ray Lines.
Hi.
Aaron Fraser.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Hi.
Kelly Collins.
Hi.
David Miller.
Hi.
All right.
Motion passed, Chairman.
All right, thank you, uh, next item, to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from Capital Projects Reserve for the EMS substation project on the sluder, sluder property in Elk Mills.
Second, Travis Hill. Second, Travis Hill. Question? Questions?
I'll just say, I think, I think they're moving pretty quick up there, and they just need some money to, to keep operations going and keep them moving.
That's right, sir, thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Hi.
Mark Levens.
Yes.
Robert A. Kev.
Ah.
Nancy Brown.
Ah.
Mike Hill.
Hi.
Patty Woodby.
Ah.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Testor.
Ah.
Charles Von Cannon.
Hi.
Hi.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Hi.
Jerry Prophet.
Hi.
Austin James.
Hi.
Ross Garland.
Hi.
Second, Moore.
Hi.
Ginger Holdren.
Hi.
Randall Jenkins.
Hi.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Hi.
Sandra Color. Sandra Color.
Hi.
Ray Lines.
Hi.
Aaron Fraser.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Kelly Collins.
Hi.
David Miller.
Hi.
All right.
Motion passed, Chairman.
All right, good, next item, to appropriate five thousand dollars from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, to purchase disinfectants, chemicals, and paper products for the courthouse and, uh, additional buildings.
Second, James.
Discussion? Questions?
I think their custodial lines and things just, uh, they were kind of depleting out, and we just needed some extra money to keep that going for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk, call.
Kim.
Hi.
Mark Levens.
Yes.
Robert A. Kev.
Hi.
Nancy Brown.
Ah.
Mike Hill.
Hi.
Patty Woodby.
Ah.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Testor.
Ah.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Hi.
Jerry Prophet.
Hi.
Austin James.
Hi.
Ross Garland.
Hi.
Taylor Ward.
Hi.
Ginger Holdren.
Ah.
Randall Jenkins.
Hi.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Hi.
Sandra Color.
Hi.
Ray Lines.
Hi.
Aaron Fraser.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Hi. Hi.
David Miller.
Hi.
All right.
Motion passed, sir.
All right, great, last but not least, I will make a, a motion to approve the twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one contract for forensic services in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and eight cents.
We've already done it, Chairman, resolution. It's already approved, Chairman.
All right, then we're good.
All right, sir, thank you very much.
Well, one, one more, I, I do have a note on here that there, this is great news, there is no increase in medical insurance premiums for twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. So thank for everybody's work for last year, and it's just continuing to pay off for us.
I appreciate the hard work of your committee, Chairman.
They're, they're doing a great job, everybody, we've been putting in some hours, but it's been a total team effort and just a, a complete effort from, from everyone in the county, really, so.
You've done a great job, thank you.
Um, let me mention this, Chairman, just to, to report on the Chamber of Commerce, they have hired a new director in the past few weeks, I guess, Joy McCray is the new lady, she is, uh, she is a local girl, and I think will be a good sound, uh, addition to the chamber, uh, she's served on, uh, Boys and Girls Club board before, some of them may know her from there, but, uh, she, she'll be a good fit there, just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I have, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone be offended if we took a pen in recess? We stand in recess, we'd be back at eight o'clock, thank you. Let's go ahead and get started again, please, Patsy, do you have something? Sure? Building and grounds, do you have a motion, any business building and ground? Mr. James, you have anything? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute.
Okay, I, I was, we're at building and grounds, you have your report, sir?
Um, I was just going to discuss, you know, uh, the ELC is doing really well, um, we're getting real close to the end of it, um, we're still trying to look like, um, iron, iron out a few kinks in the courthouse security, maybe by the time the next, uh, officials come in, they'll have this fixed, um, and then, uh, we've got to discuss, the, a motion had come out of building and grounds to, um, help me here, Josh, to, um, contact the T-Dot and see about, uh, what their stipulations are of us accepting a piece of property from them, that we have to make it public use, cannot charge for it, and, um, pretty well, in my opinion, become a tax burden, or become a burden on the county, but, you know, it, it come out as a motion, but I've had a, um...
Is that that twenty-six acres up there?
It is, it is, and I have had a, uh, uh, resident of the county, one of the voters contacted me, and she's on here, and she said she'd like to say a few things about that piece of property, I think she has some property that joins it, and she has, might have inquired about purchasing that, I believe, or something, and so, um, you know, as I talked to you earlier, and you said you was fine with that, uh, her seeking a piece there.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, my name is Linda Whitehead, and I own the property that adjoins this twenty-six acres, and, um, I know that it's owned by the state, and I made application about three weeks ago to purchase the land, and, um, I was told that the county were considering making an application, so I just wanted to give you some things, just very quickly, for you to think about, um, I know that I was told that it was going to be for a ballpark, and I talked to the city director, and he said the city looked at it for a ballpark, but way late, it was so expensive that they were not interested, so, uh, one of the things, since I'm a realtor here in Carter County for thirty-six years now, um, I, I would like to say that we have a crucial need for homes, um, it has never been as bad as it is right now, uh, I pulled up the MLS, um, and two months ago, there was like two houses in Elizabethan, it was two hundred to four hundred thousand, today I pulled it up, and there is five, there is five that's two hundred to four hundred thousand, they, the years built is nineteen hundred, one's nineteen forty-five, one is nineteen sixty-five, one's nineteen seventy, and one's nineteen ninety-eight, uh, the, so the newest house that's on the market is twenty-two years old, and there is only one in the west side, and it's on Ginabet Drive, and it's a two-story, which really doesn't work for a lot of people, you know, but, then I went from four hundred to five hundred thousand, we have one house, one house listed in the city, so you go out with it public, and you're trying to find a home, and, you know, they're having to settle, you've got the older generation that's saying, Linda, you know, I need you to sell my house, it doesn't work for me anymore, but you've got to find me a place to go, and I mean, I have looked at for months for these people for a home, because the older generation, they like the one level, they want the two-car garage, and there is just nothing, and, um, the younger generation, they're like in the thirties, and they've got their careers going, they've got children, they don't like old houses, they're telling me, okay, well, I don't like ranch-style houses, you know, I want the open floor plan, and, you know, I'll be showing them something, and they'll say, well, I like it, it's okay, but it's, it's old, you know, we want newer, so that has been just such a hard time to try to get a place that they'll love, you know, and raise their family, so, um, there's a, a potential on that property of building thirty-five to forty homes, and, you know, I know that you talked about going to ballpark, but, and I know these kids need a ballpark, and, uh, I wish that there was some way you could engineer and use what they have, do retainer walls, you know, go back off from the creek, engineer it, I'm sure somebody could figure that out, and I've heard the twins field is going to be available again, so maybe they could do twins field, but these children also need homes to live in, and, um, you know, it's been twenty years since the last subdivision, I mean, that's just, you can understand why we've got such a shortage, and these are people that you don't know, business people, that are telling me, you know, they just want, you know, a home that works for them, the kids are gone, the house just doesn't work, so if they sell that home, if they buy it in a neighborhood, it's going to be around three hundred and up, then these other people will be selling their houses, it goes on down the line, it works through, you know, get down to the hundred thousand dollar buyers, um, the tax base, you know, I developed, uh, West Link subdivision, and I looked at the tax base of that, and it's over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, so I want you to just consider, you know, if we have this, uh, property, I mean, it's highest and best use, uh, I believe, is to develop it, there's such a need there that, that we could, we could help, um, you know, it's, it's one thing, you got free stuff, so grab it, but, you know, that property, it's going to cost money to the taxpayers, and it's an ongoing tax, um, it, you, you know, to keep it up for the future, you know, I just feel like that, um, you just got to look at something that highest and best use, we've always been taught that as a realtor, to look at piece of property and see what its highest and best use is, so I just want you to consider some of those things, and, um, just, you know, consider it as a good business, what makes business sense, but you've got to do something for the, for the public, the public needs houses, they get, they make an offer on it, and you get into bidding war, and people having to pay more than full price, it's really terrible out there, and it has been for the last year, just really bad.
Okay.
Please consider.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Message back to the committee, and I'd also encourage you, starting next month, we'll have public comments, and you can come back and kind of keep us updated during...
I will, I will, thank you for giving me the time, it was just short notice, and I couldn't get on the agenda that quick, so, but I just want you to consider those things, because it's really hard out here trying to find homes for people.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
What was the address of that, that property, the location of that property?
It's out near...
Isaiah. Commissioner Grandstaff, it's straight across, if you come out of Happy Valley High School, uh, the piece up on the hill right there, that's in between, um, Powder Branch Road and, uh, the main highway up on, up there, it, it's kind of up on the hill.
Is it, that's the piece that, that whenever I was on building and grounds, right, we had, uh, initially looked at as a, as a park, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure I got my bearings right, thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Mr. James, you have anything else in your committee, sir?
Um, well, the committee had, uh, voted and, and brought that out to, um, to have the attorney see what it was going to take for us to take that piece of property, and, uh, I mean, I'll put that in the form of a motion if anybody wants to second it, or we could...
Travis Hill, second. Got a motion, Travis Hill, second, motion, any discussion? We're voting on the twenty-six acre, acre of this property, you want to discuss anything about that, Attorney?
I will, my, my understanding, what happened in the committee meeting was, uh, there was an application sent in there, that mayor would have to submit if we want to acquire that property, they were kind of in touch as to whether or not, if we applied or not, or whether the adjoining property owner there would be able to move forward, my understanding was, uh, of course, our deed would be at no cost, but we, we would have restrictions on the property, it can only be for public use, there could be no, uh, fees generated or money generated from the use of it, even in a ballpark, uh, there would be some requirements as far as, uh, we would have to finish, uh, finish some fencing, uh, out along the road, uh, we had a survey a, a few years ago when this started, I'm not sure if they would make us do a new survey or not, uh, we went through this process about three or four years ago, and we got to the point where they sent us the lease, and the commission chose not to enter into that lease, now, this is for ownership, but it still comes with the same restrictions, uh, if we intend to move forward on it, but my understanding what happened in the committee was, you all have placed the application on to be considered here, and I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not totally sure, but my understanding was, it had to be done pretty fast, and you all probably haven't even seen or would look at a contract, but basically, that's what I'm telling you, is the restrictions that would exist on it with its use, obviously there would be money, uh, associated with it to develop it into whatever it was we were going to use it for, and if we failed to use it for a public purpose, it would revert back to the state, uh, there is no timeframe that I'm aware of on that, but it is a revert, it would be a reversion cost in the deed.
So essentially, Attorney Harden just kind of read, uh, go back over here so everybody realizes, pretty well, the only thing that we can do for, do to it is make it a park, and that we are legally responsible, if somebody gets up there and gets hurt, we are legally responsible to maintain it, and the county will own it, and it will be a, a burden on the county until we ever can, even if we can ever come up with the money to do something with it, and we can never charge for anything that we do with it, and it always has to be used for public, or we have to revert it back to the T-Dot, correct?
Yeah, so maybe it would be added to coverage, just like any other land or building on by the county, that, that wouldn't necessarily be, uh, a big difference if any, but yes, we would, we would own it, it would be our responsibility, uh, to maintain or whatever we need to develop with it, and yes, it could never be used for any, uh, money generation, I mean, it would be simply a free place, either a ballpark, or a nature trail, or whatever, um, for the public to go use, uh, for free.
Chairman Lines.
Question? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the question for Attorney Harden, I guess, uh, since Ms. Whitehead has made an application, uh, if we put this off, and she is not approved, do we have the option to go back then and go into a contract with the state?
I would assume, uh, what I was told was there was a, a priority given to us, because we were in this process three or four years ago, and didn't finish it, and I think, you know, within the state guidelines for surplus property, their, their goal is to give it to another non-profit or government entity if there's a public use for it, if there's not a public use for it, or the, or we're not interested, then of course, they start looking at adjoining property owners, and, you know, they sell it to those folks for fair market value, no restrictions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, um, Miller from the Eighth District, in, in the packet, it talks about that the property might be offered to the Carter County School System for a ballpark for Happy Valley High School, has anybody at all talked to, uh, the, uh, school system about that possibility, or was it just something that was brought up during the meeting?
Mr. Miller, I believe it was something that was just brought up during the meeting, but if I understand it correctly about, from Attorney Harden, if we enter in this contract, we are the ones that's entering the contract, not Carter County Schools, so that is something that we have to go back then and address, and make sure that they will allow us to even let another government agency, he says he wouldn't see a reason why, but, um, let another government agency take the property or use the property.
Chairman, if I might, uh, Ms. Mike Hill, District Two.
Yes, sir.
Possible, Ms. Whitehead, can you still hear me?
I can.
Awesome, do you have any projections on what kind of ad valorem taxes a subdivision, like you're describing, would generate?
Uh, West Link, I, when I developed it, I had thirty-one lots, and, uh, two of those lots are not built on, uh, so it brings in over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in taxes.
I thought that's what I heard you say, I would point out that we've taken a sizable chunk off the ad valorem roster with the, uh, recent landfill acquisition, and the, the highest and best use, I like that phrase, I remember it from real estate school, um, I, I think there might be something to consider here, folks.
It could be another Quail Hollow, another West Link, I mean, everything I've ever done for this county has always been top-notch, you know, I want to, I want to do good, and it's such a need, I look at what's needed.
So what would be the average, on your estimation, what would be the average cost of the homes in, in the subdivision?
You can hardly build a new home for less than two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand, so I'm, I mean, right now, I've got a buyer, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I can't find him anything, so there's buyers out there that's got the money, they can pay cash, so, but it goes on down the line, it's not just for the people that has more money, it helps all the way down, you know, you get that ball rolling, we need it so bad, and you've got five listings in the whole town, well, six listings from two hundred to five hundred thousand in whole city, you can see, I mean, I'm just so frustrated, just trying so hard to find something that makes people happy, you know, nothing makes, nothing's better than seeing somebody be happy with a home.
Other questions? Aaron Jenkins, you have anything to say?
I don't, um, you know, I mean, I'm a firm believer that any situation or time that we can add tax, taxes to the county, where we can add income, where that's our best solution option, especially as we have realized during this middle of this COVID mess with us, uh, hoping to be able to keep meeting our quotas for monies and budgets, you know, the one thing that has seemed not to, has seemed not changed is our tax, taxes, um, for our property, uh, you know, of course, our sales tax revenues and things have adjusted, but our property tax revenues don't seem to really take much of effect, everybody always pays their property taxes usually, uh, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's up to the, but here to decide as to what, what we want to do with it, so, but I, I do see the stamp, and Ms. Whitehead had contacted me about what she had thought property would make a good point, you know, I, we build pretty regular, we don't do a whole lot of residential, but we do do some, and I can say that it is extremely hard to even find a lot in the county or the city to build on in Carter right now, so, um, besides that, I'm, I'm good to take the votes whenever you are.
Mr. Chair, Isaiah Grandstaff.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Back, whenever this had first come up, I was, of course, I believe, Chair of Building and Grounds and on that committee, and, you know, we, we looked at this on several different occasions and, and different ways, um, you know, it was baseball parks, and then it was parks for joint use between the city and the county, and, and different things of that nature, and one of the things that, that had come up, uh, and then come up again here, you know, you mentioned using that for the schools, um, due to the, the, the free public use, uh, clause that T-Dot throws in there, it was always a concern, I believe, whenever we'd had these discussions, that we wouldn't be able to necessarily charge for any events or anything that, uh, the county could profit off of, uh, even to take care of the property itself, and so, you know, that, that in itself becomes kind of a burden, um, just to even make, uh, even just take care of that property, um, so I, I caution everybody to, to maybe think about that, um, as we move forward, because, you know, usually if you do a, a ball tournament, I know that come up, uh, you do a ball tournament, you charge a fee, you've got to have somebody to clean, um, you know, you have somebody do concessions, and then, you know, you have all the wear and tear and maintenance on the facilities that you have to, you have to take care of, um, so if we're unable to kind of, kind of offset those costs, um, you know, we, we had a discussion about parks and rec, uh, on the county side in, uh, the Budget Committee meeting, uh, last Thursday, and, and that was also, you know, that was a concern that had come up about how quickly and how, uh, how... and how, how fast we are expanding in some of these areas. So I just, I just caution everybody on, on this, because it could be, it could cost us quite a bit of money in the long run. Could be a very good thing, but could cost us quite a bit of money.
Chairman, if I could make one last comment?
Yes. Motion and second on the floor. I'm going to go ahead and ask.
I, just one last comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. In our committee meeting the other night, the possibility of developing this for residential purposes was not one of the options that was even discussed. I wasn't aware that this was even a possibility. The circumstances, I believe, have changed materially since our last Buildings and Grounds meeting where this was discussed, and with a change of material circumstances, I think we should change our minds to fit the circumstances. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chairman Lyons.
Yes, sir.
Travis Hill from the Sixth District. After hearing the conversation now, and the fact that even if we could give it to the high school to put a, a football field, baseball field, we can't even charge admission, therefore I will rescind my second on that motion.
You rescind and your second?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, sir, thank you. So we have a motion. You have a second? Second?
All right, I appreciate it. I don't think we have a second, Will. We won't move forward with it then.
You have no second?
No, sir. I withdraw.
The motion failed. Thank you, thank you all of you for the information.
Thank you, and that's all Building and Grounds has for this month. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, I know I have a beer board, some minutes in here, I'm sorry, Building and Grounds, let's see, just cover that. Health and Welfare, I'm sorry, Dr. Acuff, Health and Welfare, please.
Yes, I think you've covered all of the resolutions that we've brought through, Health and Welfare, which were quite a lot. Thank you to the committee for doing that. I just wanted to remind everyone about the Zoom meeting with Bert Rosen, President and CEO of Karm, talking about homelessness, food adequacy, and how they've handled that in the Knoxville area. That is this Thursday at 5:00 PM. It will use the same link that you, we all use to get into county meetings. And all of that's been out there. You'll get a invite, calendar invite from me, probably tomorrow. A shout out and a big thanks to Abby Frye, as she's trying to hand that off to me so that we can actually conduct the meeting in, in her absence. So thank you, and that's, that's all of the information and concern from Health and Welfare. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir, for bringing all those resolutions through.
Chairman, Chairman Lyons.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask Dr. Acuff the time for that meeting, please?
That, thank you, ma'am. That meeting will be 5:00 PM, so join us a few minutes early so that you're on the call. I talked with Bert this morning, and he's gonna, I'll be sending out to the, you already received some emails from me, but certain videos that we're all kind of up to speed on what they do at Karm, but he's going to really focus on food adequacy and homelessness, and then it will be open to every, everyone. Let me just go ahead and, and reiterate, invite your constituents, there'll be a number of churches on the phone. I've invited both the Press and the Star to be there. The Boys and Girls Clubs will be there, a couple of other 501(c)(3) city council will be there. So open it up to as many people that are interested in this topic as you would like.
Thank you, Dr. Acuff. The other minutes that I have in my folder are nominating Ms. Woodby.
Yes, thank.
Beer board. I'll do the beer board first.
Okay.
Anyone want to say anything about the beer board minutes?
Chairman, there's really not much to say. The permit request for Mr. Patel was approved for the Captain Jack's location. I have been asked for an application on behalf of a, a business in the Hampton area. I delivered it to the gentleman, but it hasn't been returned, so there's no, there's no action pending.
Okay, sir, thank you. The only minutes I have left in my folder, and yours as well, I think are the nominating committee meeting.
Yes, that's correct, Chairman Lyons. I'll go ahead and begin that. An application was submitted for reappointment for Beverly Joyce Matherley for reappointment to the Equalization Board, and I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Right. Have a second, Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye. The, the next topic that came through nominating was the clarification on the Sixth District Planning Seat on the opening or reappointment, and I will let Attorney Harden just kind of do a recap of what he recapped with us during nominating meeting before I put that in a form of a motion.
Okay, well, the long and short of it is, there's a discrepancy there about a term if there was a reappointment. If there was, it never made it to the official County Commission minutes, and so as it stands, at least my thought is that that position needs to be advertised, reappointed. I'll let you know, Ms. Woodby and all of the rest of it. I spoke with Mr. Schutler, and he agrees with that and says that he, I believe he's going to take care of the advertisement, so it could be back before nominating committee in June.
Okay.
Take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney. Do you want to put that in form of a motion?
I'll put that in a form of a motion to advertise for the Sixth District seat for the Planning Commission.
Do you want to add to that that Mr. Schutler is going to do the advertising?
Correct. I'll add that Mr. Schutler is going to do the advertising for that position.
I'll take the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Who is the second? Name?
Gary Bailey from.
Special Gary Bailey, second.
He's going to advertise for the boards on your fields. Thanks.
Yeah. Did you hear that, Chairman Woodby?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion finished. I, I thank you. Yes, sir. Director Schutler, first, thank you, sir. Anything else, Ms. Woodby?
No, that's all. Thank you, Chairman Lyons.
Any, any committees or boards that I have overlooked?
Chairman Lyons, Brad Johnson.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, just wanted to give you just a real quick brief from the financial management side of the House.
Yes, sir.
We had, of course, we have the ongoing contract with the firm to do our wage rate determination, which the Assistant Finance Director Kennedy and the Finance Director Burke and I, we have placed, placed it on hold because of the pandemic. They will not be authorized to restart this until both governors of their state and our state on their executive orders, which would allow travel, because the next important part of their contract would be here in Carter County doing interviews. So we will wait probably another 30 to maybe 45 days to see how that turns out. There is, we have been in contact with the Finance Director and his assistant. Keep it in mind that we have no active contracts other than that, which would call for us to have a meeting of such, and it's being monitored by both of them, and the recommendations to make. Thank you, and most of those questions.
Any questions for Chairman? Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Chairman Lyons, I've, is, is, is Mr. Schutler still there?
Yes.
Could I request that when he sends the advertisement in, that he, that he copies me on an email or something verifying that it is, when it's that being advertised and that it is being advertised?
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else? Anything else?
Chairman, this is Travis Hill, Second District. Agricultural had a meeting on Tuesday. I was unable to attend. I just got the minutes today, so I'll put those, I'll send those out tomorrow. I know Dr. Acuff was at the meeting. If he'd like to touch on anything, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Just a, a couple of things. Commissioner Hester was also there, so he may want to chime in as well. We are looking at a, a number of issues, and of course, Ag, the UT Experiment Station as it is, are still reaching out to folks, doing a lot of online teaching, online opportunities. The ladies are just doing a really, really good job. We appreciate their efforts. We did explore some, maybe some new opportunities. Commissioner Hester brought up that let's look at things like meat processing in the county, and as you know, Unica High School has a meat cutting program, and Kathleen Wilson, who oversees the cattle portion of the Ag Experiment Station and helps our beef producers, also said that part of the problem in this whole cycle, even though the DOJ, I think, is investigating some of the meatpacking folks across the country, one of the biggest obstacles is the fact that we do not have enough USDA inspectors. So Mark and I and Kathleen will be reaching out to see if that's another opportunity for Carter County Schools to add a USDA inspector's certificate for some of our kids in the meat program to become a part of that. Most of those jobs pay in the neighborhood of 45,000 to 47,000 a year. So that's, that's another opportunity, I think, to grow our own, and many of the cattlemen in Carter County particularly, but also in Unicoi, have reached out to me saying that, one, they'd like to have more meat processing. H&amp;H is the only meat processor in Carter County. As you know, Potter's is now out of business in Wantaga, and is up, and there's nothing in Unicoi County. So there's some good opportunity for us to look at some other things that might be able to bring not only additional training for jobs, but also some additional aspects coming into our county. So Commissioner Hester, you may want to comment as well.
Yes, Mr. Acuff. After our discussion, I talked to a local business owner that was kindly in that area, and he handles themselves meat, beef and meat and stuff like that. And he checked with one of the slaughter houses, that meat processing place that did, did this kind of work, and that was clean, USDA inspected, and said there, if you were going to have a custom animal down there, their first opportunity to do it was April of 2021. So I think there is a need for this in our county. Thank you all.
Appreciate that information. Any other comments or things I've missed? I do appreciate Abby. She's worked tirelessly with me. Mayor, appreciate you working with me. Amanda, you've done a good job tonight. Appreciate you being here. Patty and Mary, we re-elected our attorney, who has been so important to me, and serving as chair. And that being said, I want to, I want to update you on a couple of things going on with me. I am, I'm dealing with some more health issues. And I won't go into detail with what health issues, but also have my plate full with personal family issues as well. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to stay very active. Mayor, I'm there 24/7. Abby, I'm there 24/7. Attorney Harden, I'm there for 24/7. But I think that I will, in order to try to get some, some of these new medicines I've started me on, see if they're going to work or whatever. I'm going to ask Chairwoman Patty Woodby if she would to take over the chair for next month, and let's hope and pray it's not virtual, because, because I think we took the M off of Zoom tonight. When you take the M off, you know what that spells, don't you? That was the first part, zoo. Zoo, but we got it straightened out, I think, to some degree. I think you're a wonderful group of people to work with. I'm hoping that my, my problems are not long-term, as you never know, when you have about three doctors bringing things that's in about three different directions. So I know you all are praying people. I know that you're my family, my work family. I think I could reach out to anyone on this committee and that you would be there to help me. That being said, I need your prayers. I certainly needed your patience tonight, and now you know why. And I'll just close with saying, I'm still around kicking, but Ms., Ms. Woodby will be helping with the development. I hope it might be the next agenda, and always use Dr., I mean, excuse me, Attorney Harden in that prospect, in that process. So with that being said.
Before we get out of here, let me just say, I appreciate you all again. Obviously, it's been my honor to represent y'all the last six years, and I appreciate you voting for that again. And I will say, as far as these Zoom meetings go, I realize they're not perfect. I have tried to participate in most all of them for some period of time, just to make sure, I think we made some adjustments tonight initially from the beginning, but everybody's trying, it's a good faith effort, and I apologize if there was some technical glitches there at the first. And with the chairman's indulgence, I'll ask, you know, for purposes of tonight, if there was anybody who didn't understand anything they voted on, let's get it out and down before this meeting is adjourned. If not, I'll submit my report, as I always do.
Any misunderstandings at all? I appreciate each and every one of you taking a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Lewis, Patty Lewis, needs each chairman, chairwoman to notify her as soon as possible if you are or are not going to have a meeting this coming month, and whether that meeting's going to be virtual or in person, in person. That's something new too, on, that sounds like. There's no way he's not my brother. A good friend, Olden Pay. You're on this, right?
Chairman Lyons, Brad Johnson.
Go ahead, Johnson, Commissioner Johnson.
I want to suggest, we done it last year, and it paid pretty good dividends. Of course, our Budget Committee is hard at work at their job, and they're getting, I'd say, close to coming to the final recommendation, but I recommend to the, to either yourself or to Commissioner Woodby that once they have finished with their voting system, that they be a call meeting of the commissioners' worth, for the purpose of reviewing and discussing before we go to full meeting on our next year's budget. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, Woodby, I was talking with the attorney. We wanted to make sure we understood your recommendation, sir. That was you wanted to have a special call meeting after the Budget Committee finishes their work? You want to have a special call meeting just to see what they've done before you really have a meeting to vote? Is that right?
Yeah, that is correct. And it should be a special call meeting, because we don't know exactly what all the Budget Committee still has to do, and there may be something. and there may be something crossed our head up. And it would also give each commissioner a chance to possibly get hard copies from the finance to where we can be going through instead of taking up during our June meeting in case anything adverse comes up. That eliminates that problem, which we have had in years past. Last year, we done this, and it worked real effectively.
Oh, I don't see anything wrong with that. Attorney Harden doesn't see anything legally wrong with that. So you have to do a special call meeting, and then that particular business only can be discussed.
Right? I think he more like, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're more or less talking like a workshop scenario. It still needs to be advertised, but the full commission is going to get together, discuss maybe the budget or get questions answered, no vote. And then vote at the regular meeting, the next regular budget meeting, next regular commission meeting, is that right?
That is correct, that'll work.
Yeah.
Chairman, Chairman Woodby, you and I can talk about that if that's okay, try to get that in place.
That's fine, I think we did a workshop last budget year, same, the same as Brad's requesting.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, we did.
Yeah, and it helped, it helped tremendously, it really did.
Very helpful.
Very helpful.
Commissioner Johnson, anything else before I take a motion to adjourn?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Only one thing. The, I would assume, I don't think it was a paid meeting that we did last year for a workshop, but I would imagine that we need to determine if this is going to be a paid meeting or it's not going to be a paid meeting, it'd be a true workshop.
It was paid last year.
It was paid last year.
Well, then, then, yeah, I would assume, Attorney Harden, you can check, check me if I'm wrong on this. I would like for Commissioner Johnson to put that in a form of a motion, and I certainly would second it.
You want to put that in form of a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I sure big boy, I'll put it in motion. I will, Mr. Chairman, I'll place that into motion that on the special call meeting, that it would be paid for the commissioners out of our commission funds, which I'm sure we have sufficient amount.
Dr. Akef, you second that motion?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay, thank you both very much. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Campbell to adjourn, second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Campbell has a question.
I know we didn't have prayer to start with.
Mr. Campbell is going to close our meeting with prayer, I appreciate it.
I repeat, Father God, Lord, as above our heads today, we're thankful for what you give us, and pray that you put our feet to the floor, take another step, God, where we know, Lord, that you watch over us, God, and take care of us. What we do pray today, Lord, for Brother Lyons, God, we pray, God, that you put those unseen hands upon him, Lord, give him the peace and strength and wisdom, God, that he needs. What we do pray for Brother David Millet, Lord, possibly his daughter, God, we pray, Lord, that you give him strength and help, Lord, his family. Lord, we pray for this commission, we pray, Lord, that when we make decisions, Lord, that we seek you first. God, today we do thank you most of all for your son, which our cross, that reaching every one of us. Lord, without the shedding of that blood, Lord, there would be no safety. Lord, today we do praise you and honor, thank you for the love, mercy and grace. God, we pray that you watch over us from when we go home, Lord, to keep your hands upon each one. God, we pray for our president, the leaders of our country, all the way down to our local governments, Lord, and our commissioners. Lord, we do pray for those that are sick, afflicted. Lord, we pray, Lord, that you have your warning upon them. Lord, we do pray that you increase our faith, Lord. Sometimes we see the storm, Lord, sometimes that we know that we are in that storm and don't know it. God, we know that you do know. Lord, we pray that you keep your hands upon each one. Yes, these things abide, amen.
Amen. Chairman Lyons, my host deal.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, thank you.
All in favor, aye? Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
God bless you, Ray.
Thank you, sir.